Just let that kick into gear. Yeah, so welcome everyone. Thank you so much for jumping on. As always, I'm super appreciative of you jumping on and taking up your valuable time to listen to me talk. But it is obviously a very important topic and something that we're really appreciative of you all doing this role. So we want to give you as much support as we possibly can through this role. We do have some new people into the group today, which is really great. So welcome to those new people who haven't been on to a session before. I'm really again appreciative, as I said, of you all jumping on and taking the time. So this is the second session of our M P I O network. For those who are new, my name is Matt Allen. I'm the Head of Policy Integrity and Risk at Tennis New South Wales. And the integrity space has kind of linked in quite nicely with M P I O. So I guess I am your go-to person for any questions that you have in the role or any other support that you might need as you, I guess, feel feel this really important role in the tennis space. So welcome and thank you again. Before I jump into the content, I just wanted to do a quick acknowledgement just to recognise the traditional custodians of the various lines on which we're all joining the call from today and pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. So for today's session, I kind of want to cover four key things because we do have some new people. I just wanted to do a quick refresher on what we talked about in the first session. Because that first session is really the foundation of what it means to be an M P I O. I'm then keen to give you all an opportunity to, I guess, ask any questions or raise any situations that you might have come across since we last caught up. And obviously, I want this to be your group as much as possible. So you know, any burning issues or questions or even ideas or suggestions about things that Tennis New South Wales can do to better support you in this role, I'm really keen to hear from you. So yeah, that's kind of what I'm hoping. But obviously, again, it's your group. So if you don't feel like you have anything that you want to talk about, that's totally fine too. But I did just want to give you that opportunity. I then just wanted to kind of touch on some tips and tricks around having difficult conversations, which can happen in your M P I role. So again, hope that you can feel a little bit more equipped to have some difficult conversations and potentially deal with some people who are feeling quite emotional or stressed about a particular issue. And then just to round it out, I just wanted to give a really high level overview of what options are available to people in the tennis landscape to resolve the issues that they have. And I guess I'll touch on it a bit more. But it is really useful as an M P I O that you do have kind of a high level understanding of what management options are available. Because that obviously then becomes your toolkit of what you can kind of advise people and guide people on in terms of their ability to resolve issues. So just recapping that first session very quickly. And hopefully you'll recall me say that if there's one thing that I want you to take out of that first session, it's what the role of an M P I O actually is. And again, to just reinforce that, that the role of an M P I O is not to investigate complaints. So there should be someone additional at your club that is the person who manages complaints. Or alternatively, that's what I'm here for at Tennis New South Wales or the Intendness Australia Integrity Unit, where we're the ones that kind of manage and resolve complaints. The M P I's role is very much to be that source of information and guidance. So really trying to hopefully make this role a little bit less scary for you all. You know, you're not expected to be subject matter experts. You're not expected to investigate. You're not expected to resolve. Really, what your role is, is to just listen, be that impartial sounding board, and then just have a few pieces of information that you can give to a person who has an issue around the options that they have to resolve an issue. So you know, that's things like having a high level understanding of the policy framework, which I am going to talk about today, so that you can kind of guide them around what that process might look like. But again, you don't actually then have a role in applying that policy. You know, it's not your role to investigate. It's not your role to encourage people to make complaints. It's not your role to submit a complaint on a person's behalf. You don't need to mediate. You don't need to do any of that. That's where we can assist you. Or you have someone else at your club that's had that more formal training around complaint management or has that role or might be the president or whoever it may be at the club. The probably only caveat on that is, and I flagged this, is that if you do hear something that relates to potentially the safety of children, we would ask that you do, you know, come forward and report that to Tennis New South Wales or the Tennis Australia Integrity Unit. So outside of child safeguarding, you have no positive responsibility to do anything. It's just really to be that sounding board. Because that's so important, I'll just pause there and just make sure that that is kind of well understood by everyone. And please let me know if there's any questions. And I should have said at the start, obviously, I want this to be as collaborative as you want. So please feel free to jump in with any questions at any point. Perfect. I'll take the silence. That's all good, which is encouraging. The second thing I kind of touched on in our initial session was around the training that's available to give you formal accreditation as an M P I O. So whilst you can be an M P I O without formal accreditation, and we do encourage you to go through this training because it really does give you those skills and abilities that you might be able to use within that role. So the formal accreditation process for an M P I O is a two-step process. So the first step is online training through either Play By The Rules or Sports Integrity Australia. They're the same thing. They're the same training. But the language is used interchangeably. So you actually get taken whichever platform you go through, you get taken to the same training. Elvira, just so you jumped off mute, did you have a question with that one? All good? Cool. Take that as all good.
Hello?
Yep.
Just wondering where the public officer comes in on this with the M P I O?
As in your club's public officer?
Yes, with related to complaints with.
Yeah. Yeah, so the public officer is a separate role again. So there, I mean, it is the possibility that the public officer could be the M P I O because the public officer isn't necessarily the person that is the complaint management person. It's really up to the club how they want to structure it and, you know, the resources that they have available to them. And obviously, understand that some clubs don't necessarily have the resources to have these roles spread across different people. But really, the important distinction is that the person that is managing complaints is a different person to the M P I O. So that's really the important distinction. Outside of that, it's really up to the club to manage how they want to structure it as possible, as best suits their situation.
Thank you.
That's okay. So yeah, obviously, as I just mentioned, so first step in terms of the formal training was around that online course, course through Play By The Rules. And then there's a second stage, which is a face-to-face training. And then, once you do both of those steps, you get a formal accreditation, which doesn't expire. So you do the training once and you've got a formal accreditation to be a formal M P I O. Importantly, with that step two group session or face-to-face training, we're asking tennis people to just hold off on that for now. And the reason being for that is that we're actually working with Sports Integrity Australia to develop a tennis-specific version of that, which I'm actually going to deliver as part of this network next year. So if you, you know, you did want that formal accreditation, you can just jump online and do that first step. And then after that, I'll deliver that second stage next year. And that, once you've done those two steps, you then will have that formal accreditation. Just saying, good question. The online learning probably takes around an hour. So it's not too intensive. The face-to-face session's a little bit longer, so probably around two hours for the face-to-face session. So I might just need to run that one a few times, just to make sure that everyone can have the opportunity to jump into that at a time that suits them. But yeah, the online one is not too hard and would definitely recommend you doing it because it does, yeah, really give you some valuable skills. Yeah, so that's kind of the summary of what we touched on last time. I guess, moving on now to what I wanted to touch on today. Really keen to hear from you all around, you know, any experiences that you've had as an M P I O, any examples of scenarios or questions that you'd like to bring to the group. Obviously, I guess reflecting on what I've just spoken about. Because the role of the M P I O isn't to investigate complaints. Probably not looking to discuss, you know, how you would resolve a specific issue, just what you would do as the M P I O if a person came to you in that situation. And obviously, if you are going to use real-life examples, if you've thought of any, just de-identify people so they don't use people's names just for privacy reasons. But yeah, does anyone have anything that they want to ask the group or bring to the group or even any suggestions? I can see you thinking, Justin.
Yeah, I'm happy to come off mute. So maybe I can share, I can share a practice that we developed that came off the back of one of your calls, Matt, which has been really well received by the club. So some of the resources that you shared in a call, I think it was at the end of last year, around child safeguarding and some of the Tennis Australia policies and posters and infographics. So thanks to, thanks to some of your colleagues. We've downloaded some of that material. As a committee at Colleroy Tennis Club, we agreed which we felt would be the most valuable to put on display in our clubhouse. We blew them up to A3 size. We added the Colleroy Tennis logo. We've laminated them and have them very proudly on display. We've just recently updated our website. And we've used some of the wording again from the Tennis Australia resources just to make it really, really clear around zero tolerance as well. So I'll pop the link to our new website in the chat in case that's helpful. But thank you for the resource. It's really, really helpful for us as a committee. And I feel really proud that we're able to promote very visibly on the website and in the clubhouse for everybody to be able to see.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Thank you so much for sharing and genuinely thank you. That, you know, really makes me happy just to hear that it's been effective for you. And I think that's a really good example because we've found too that visual things are often like the best conversation starters. So the posters that hopefully you all got from Tennis Australia, from your TDOs, they, we thought that they were really good because they were just this really visible conversation starter. And that's what we really want in the child safeguarding space is just these conversations to be constantly ongoing. So anything that you can do, like Justin suggested, is really fantastic in terms of just keeping those conversations going. But yeah, thank you so much for sharing, Justin. Does anyone else have anything that they wanted to raise or ask or? I'm going to take that as you're all doing a fantastic job and there's no issues in tennis whatsoever. So I'm really glad to hear that. So just moving on then to, I guess, the more meaty kind of, I guess, topics or lessons that I wanted to kind of cover today. So the first one is dealing with or having difficult conversations. So obviously, this is probably not something that we really want to see happen a lot. But it is the reality that as an M P I O, you might be faced with someone who obviously is feeling particularly emotional or particularly upset about a particular situation. And so I really just want you to have some tips and tricks in your playbook to be able to, I guess, deal with that situation in a way that, I guess, you know, leads it to be a more resolution-based conversation rather than an emotional upsetting, you know, everyone yelling sort of conversation. So I guess really that's the focus today. I mean, there's no expectation that you're going to be an expert in this. I'm certainly not an expert in this. And I've been doing this sort of, this sort of role for four or five years now, where I've, you know, dealing quite often with people who are emotional and that sort of stuff. And it's certainly a challenging thing. So definitely no expectation that you would be an expert. But I'm just really keen to kind of share some of the things that I've found work really well in these sort of situations. And I think probably the most important rule of thumb is that you want to meet people at their level. So even though you might not necessarily think that their issue is that big of a deal, it is a big, it is a big deal to them. It's important to them. And so it's really important that whilst you might not necessarily agree, you're able to acknowledge and allow them to feel heard. That's really got to be the motivation for you in this sort of situation is to allow the other person to have the clear air, to tell their story, tell their side of things and just feel like someone is listening to them without judging them or questioning them. That's really kind of has to be the motivator. Again, acknowledging someone's feelings and acknowledging that someone is, you know, emotional or upset about a situation is not the same thing as, you know, telling them they're right or that their position's correct or what they're asking for is right. But it's just really about allowing someone to feel like they have someone to talk to. They have someone to go to that will listen and, I guess, you know, not judge or criticize or, I guess, yeah, put them down. And that's really important because we really want to create this culture in tennis of people being encouraged to speak up. So, you know, the tendency and I experienced it too is to wish that people didn't complain. Because complaining is being or bringing issues up is seen as a negative. But actually, it's an opportunity to improve your practices as a club or even as us at Tennis New South Wales. So really just trying to reframe that within your own head around. It's actually, you know, a positive thing that, you know, feedback is welcome. Criticism is welcome and allows you to do better. Particularly in these really important spaces such as member protection or child safeguarding. So yeah, that's, that's kind of, I guess, the rule of thumb that I really want to lean to. So in terms of how you actually do this in practice, I guess, the starting point is really to try and focus on what you can control. Obviously, you're not going to be able to tell a person how to feel. But what you can do is, I guess, influence how they're feeling and what, how they're interacting with you and what their emotions are. And I guess, again, it really goes back to that notion of meeting people at their level and allowing them to feel heard. That is something that you have in your control. And you know, it's not going to be perfect every time. But more often than not, if you allow people to feel heard, then the conversation can be, I guess, geared to be more of that resolution focus and, I guess, be more productive rather than destructive. Again, in order to do this, it's really important that you reflect on, you know, potentially what personal biases you might be bringing to a particular situation. So that's really important in terms of any preconceived ideas you might have about the person that's bringing the issue forward or even, you know, the issue or the person that they might be talking about. That's what, it's a really important aspect of being an M P I O is that you do try and remain as impartial as possible. So again, a really good exercise internally is to reflect on making sure that, you know, those preconceived ideas or biases that you might have are not being allowed to influence the way that you're reacting. And I guess, I mean, I'm going to talk a bit about empathy in this. And I guess that's part of that around really trying to understand from the other person's perspective as opposed to, I guess, inserting yourself into that conversation. What I found to be really effective is to actually be really, I guess, conscious of the language that you use and, I guess, really targeted with the language that you use. And I've got some examples on the slide. And if people are interested, I can share some more examples. But it's around using positive rather than negative language. So with those examples on the slide, the first, I guess, option is the one that's probably a bit more inflammatory or serious or formal. And then the other one is, I guess, probably a bit more of a more relaxed, I guess, resolution type of language. And that's often really effective because, take the first example, for example, if you say, oh, this is a really serious incident, that, you know, immediately brings in notions of police and, you know, investigations and all that sort of stuff. Whereas if you say situation, that's a bit more general, a bit more, you know, neutral language. So there's been a lot of studies found around, conducted around the impact that that sort of language can have on a person who's got an issue. And I guess, by using those words in the first column, yeah, I guess reinforcing how serious and how significant this situation is for that person, which I guess, you know, reinforces their own going on in their head around how terrible everything is. Whereas if you can kind of de-escalate with the language that you use and, I guess, steer the person towards it being more resolution-oriented rather than focusing on, you know, their emotions and what they're feeling, that can be a really effective way to, I guess, kind of de-escalate a situation and de-escalate a conversation. Again, and I mean, this is probably quite an obvious one. But the body language that you're portraying is really important. Obviously, we pick up a lot of our communication from visual cues as well as the language that people are, I guess, conveying. So it's really important that you kind of are conscious that your body language is receptive of what the person's saying. If you, you know, are dismissive in your body language with your arms crossed and kind of closed off physically, that can just spur someone on to, you know, feel like, oh, no one listens to me. This is ridiculous. No one, no one gives me the time of day or no one cares. So again, it's really just being conscious of the overall message that you're conveying to the person. And I guess finally, and this is a pretty important call out, is that, you know, having these conversations can be challenging for sure. And they can have an impact on you as well. And that's totally okay. We want you as in this role to make sure that you're protecting yourself first and foremost. And because of that, Tennis Australia actually has free and confidential support services that you as tennis participants can all access. So, you know, if you find yourself as an M P I O in this situation where you are dealing with a difficult person or a difficult conversation and you feel like you just want someone to talk to, someone that isn't, you know, necessarily associated with your club or even tennis at all. You know, this is an external provider. So I'll share those details after the session with you all. And you can actually use that information for your club as well. So that can be passed on to other people in your club that, I guess, may be experiencing some tough times as well. So that's a really good resource which I'll share. So just diving into this a bit further and in particular, the empathy side of things. As I said, I guess, you know, often, the only reason that people will come forward is because they want that opportunity to be heard and they want someone to listen to them. So having that empathy and trying to, I guess, understand and put yourself into that person's shoes around why they're feeling like they're feeling is a really important aspect. And again, that kind of then helps you to make sure that you're not letting your own preconceived ideas or biases impact the advice that you're giving. So I guess it's just some things to think about in terms of, you know, a person being angry is almost always not going to be about you or about your fault, your fault or anything that you've done. It's likely to be something else that's going on in their lives. So, you know, is this learned behaviour? If a kid at your tennis club is behaving really badly, is it because their parents behaved really badly? And then, you know, that allows you to get that thought process going around, oh, that must be really hard for that person. And I can kind of understand why they interacted or acted in that way. So really just trying to put yourself into the other person's shoes and get an understanding of why they're acting in a certain way. And as I've kind of said the whole way through, that really helps you to build a rapport, allows you to have that person feel like they're being heard to, heard. And yeah, I guess then, yeah, allows them to feel like they're getting out of the conversation what they were hoping to get out of it. And then just again, I kind of have touched on a few of these before, but some practical things to think about in terms of making sure that a conversation is as positive as possible, is de-escalated as possible and, I guess, is, you know, as constructive as possible. So a really good one is, I guess, this reframing notion that I've been talking about. I get about, you know, trying to change a person's focus from the emotions that they're feeling to what the solutions might be or how it can be worked through in a collaborative way that will allow everyone to move forward together. Another really important consideration is around the environment where you're having the conversation. You know, is it actually an appropriate place to have a conversation of that kind? Is there an audience that, you know, might be influencing you to act in a certain way or respond in a certain way? You know, can you move somewhere quieter that's a bit more private? And I guess this is, yeah, it's totally okay to say, look, I can see that you're emotional. I can see that you're upset. Why don't we come inside and have, you know, a cup of tea and we can chat about this a bit more? So just those sort of considerations about making the person feel as comfortable as possible, feeling like it's a safe space and feeling like they're being respected and heard. Again, I kind of touched on this a little bit, but the communication that you provide is really important in terms of how a person's interaction reacts. As I've said, people want to be listened to. And there's a few things that you can do to make sure that that happens. Obviously, you've probably all heard the phrase active listening before. So that's, you know, making sure that you're showing interest in what they're saying. You're actually listening. You're not staring off into the distance. You know, you're paraphrasing the things that they're saying back to them so that they feel like you're hearing them, asking questions, taking notes. And a really good technique that I've found is to actually thank them. So, you know, along the lines of thank you for providing that information. That's really helpful. That allows me to understand what's going on a lot better. That makes them feel like they've, you know, done the right thing and contributed positively to the whole process. And, you know, as we all know, it can be scary to speak up. And we really want to encourage people to have that positive experience when they're speaking up. And again, just probably that bottom point around assertiveness. And I've touched on it a few times and it is a really important one. That allowing someone to feel heard is not the same thing as telling them that they're right or what they want is appropriate or, I guess, you know, yeah, appropriate for the circumstances. But it is, it is possible to make someone feel like they're being heard and acknowledged and understood without necessarily agreeing with them. And that's a really, really good skill. What I'll do, because I am conscious of all of your valuable time, is I've got a really good kind of tips and tricks cheat sheet that I'll, that I'll share around after this session as well, which kind of again goes into a bit more depth around these sort of having difficult conversations and some of the tactics that you can use. I did just want to kind of, a visual example, like we kind of touched on before, is really useful. So I did just want to show you this video quickly. It is in the context of probably a complaint, more a complaints officer than an M P I O. But I just want you to kind of pay attention to, I guess, how the person is interacting with the person who's bringing an issue forward and how that makes them feel. So I think, I guess, the message I'm trying to get conveyed with that video is in that first response when the lady was a little bit dismissive of the information that was coming. You could see immediately that the little girl kind of closed off. She withdrew. And I guess that's, that's a result of the fact that she didn't feel like her issues were being heard or that, you know, she was being, I guess, respected or believed. And, you know, that then probably means that the next time that little girl is having an issue, she's probably less likely to speak up because she's had a negative experience in terms of speaking up before. So that's where in your role as an M P I O, you are kind of like that first port of call. And so the way that you act and the way that you respond is really important then in terms of how a person will feel about speaking up and raising issues. And, you know, the initial issue that they might bring up is actually maybe not the issue that they're really concerned about. And there might be something more serious going on, but they're just testing the waters in terms of how an adult, in this case, responds to that person speaking up. So again, really important that you convey that message that speaking up is encouraged, that they're welcome to, and they will be believed and supported when speaking up. So I guess that's kind of, I guess, a visual example of what I've been talking about in terms of meeting people at their level and allowing them the space to feel heard. So I guess before I move on, were there any questions around that? Again, obviously very high level and very quick. And I'm not an expert myself on that sort of stuff. But is there any thoughts that anyone had around that, that sort of dealing with difficult people topic or difficult conversations? All right, perfect. I'll move through this next section pretty quickly. But what I did want to do was just kind of give you that kind of base level knowledge around what the options are for someone when someone comes forward with, I guess, an issue. I guess, the intention here is again, that you're not an expert. But it is a really valuable tool for you to have as an M P I O to have just, I guess, a general idea of what the options are for resolving an issue. Because that then allows you to provide that guidance to a person who might be speaking up. So I guess in terms of what people want when they come forward or when they complain, and again, it's kind of linked into the things I've been talking about before. But they want to be heard. They want to be, have their point of view understood. They want to be treated with respect. And I guess have that space to be heard and, I guess, know that they're not going to be rejected or, you know, yeah, I guess, put down or pushed away. It's also really important that people want to understand that they're not going to suffer negative consequences as a result of speaking up. That's probably the biggest inhibitor to people speaking up is that they think that, that they're going to get in trouble if they raise a complaint, particularly if the complaint is about someone senior within a tennis club. So I guess something that you can try and focus on within your own club is building that culture where speaking up is encouraged. It's seen as a positive thing. It's seen as an opportunity to respond and improve rather than necessarily a negative thing. And I think for me, something that I found to be. Um, and I think for me, something that I found to be extremely useful in, in situations where someone is, is bringing forward an issue is to actually ask them to think about what they want to have happen out of coming forward. Um, it kind of puts the ball back in their court a little bit around what are they actually hoping to achieve? And again, similar to what I was saying before, by asking them that question, you're not committing yourself to doing necessarily what they're asking for. We all know that there are situations where people will, you know, want someone to be kicked out of a tennis club for something that's very minor. And obviously, that's not gonna be an appropriate management option. But giving them the opportunity to actually reflect on what they're trying to achieve um allows the conversation to be guided a little bit more around what is an appropriate, you know, middle ground between potentially what they want and, and what, what they, and what is an appropriate response. Um, and that is a really, the, the ability of a really, I guess, skilled N P I O is to be at a point, the person in, in the direction of a complaint uh management option that is gonna, you know, achieve what they want whilst also, I guess, achieving the best outcome for, for the club as a whole. And again, you know, as I've, as I've said before, it's not the role of an N P I O to tell someone how they should act in terms of resolving a complaint. Um, but I guess, you know, they do have the ability to, I guess, identify what might be a really appropriate way to manage a, manage a particular issue. Um, and often, uh, someone who is, is complaining, that it might be that, that all that they want is to have someone hear them. So by asking them what they want, you know, rather than diving into, oh, that needs to go under the member protection policy, blah, blah, blah. There needs to be a really formal investigation. They might just say, oh, no, I just, I just wanted to let you know so that you're aware of it. And then, you know, you've avoided the whole process and the whole formal seriousness of, of a policy investigation or complaint when all they wanted to do was just, I guess, put it on the radar. And it is okay to say, great, thank you. I've, I've made some notes. Um, I can keep that on file in case, you know, it needs to be referred to down the track if, if other things pop up or anything like that. Like that, that is a totally valid way um to resolve a matter. And, and it often is potentially the reason why someone's coming forward is that all they want is to be heard. So I guess there's two kind of streams, um, in terms of management options that are available, being informal management options and formal management options. Um, in a club, tennis club setting, informal management options can be, often be a really good first port of call. Um, and the reason being is obviously, as the name suggests, that they're less formal, they're quicker, um, they're less, I guess, daunting than some of the more formal complaint management options. Um, and so this can be really positive, particularly for, I guess, lower level uh situations or, um, I guess, you know, first time issues between people because they can be often a bit more collaborative and a bit more about getting everyone to pull in the same direction again. And, and I guess allow everyone to feel like they can safely participate in, in your club or your tennis environment. Um, again, moving forward without, uh, I guess, any serious consequences. Um, obviously, it's important to reflect on whether an informal option is appropriate. Um, you know, and if the more serious the conduct obviously uh is, the less likely an informal approach is gonna be appropriate. Um, so it's kind of a sliding scale of the more serious conduct, obviously, the more serious the, the management option um that would be required. And it's also really important that, um, I guess, that management options that are suggested to a person are trauma informed. So obviously, if they're really scared of a person in the tennis club, um, and they've, they've found the courage to speak up about it, then suggesting that they have a conversation with that person is probably not gonna be the right option. So I guess it's just kind of considering the whole picture and what's the best balance that can be struck between, I guess, resolving a, the dispute in a way that can allow everyone to move forward versus, um, yeah, I guess, you know, what is an appropriate level of seriousness. So just running quickly through some of these informal options, obviously, an informal conversation with the person is an option. Sometimes the person might just feel like they wanna sit down with the, with the other person or the other group of people and just again have their, have their concerns heard without anything further than that happening. Um, again, that may or may not be appropriate depending on the circumstances. And as an N P I O, there is no expectation that you would act as a mediator or mediate an issue. That's not your role as an N P I O. Um, I'll touch on mediation in a second, but that is definitely not your role as an N P I O. But obviously, you can help to facilitate people catching up for a coffee and just chatting through their issues if they feel like that's appropriate. Um, again, an apology is, is a really good, um, I guess, informal, less formal way to manage an issue. Um, and this can take a little bit of work, you know, potentially someone more senior in the club reaching out to the person saying, hey, not sure if you're aware of this, but this person was really upset when this happened. Um, you know, they, if, if they've said that they would love to have an apology from you, and then they would be fine to move forward. Um, is that something that you'd be willing to do? That can be really effective because often a person who's bringing forward an issue will feel like they've been validated and heard if the other person, you know, recognizes, I guess, the issues or the harm caused and, and is able to apologize for that. That can be a really effective way. Again, may not be appropriate in all circumstances and will be really dependent on the situation, um, and even the people involved. The, the other person may be someone who is extremely combative and will never give an apology. And therefore, you know, it's probably not the most appropriate management action to suggest to the person. Um, so then, I guess, moving to, it's, I guess, a little bit more formal is, is the mediation process. So the mediation process is essentially the idea of, of bringing the parties together with someone who's independent and specially trained. Um, and they kind of guide the conversation to be around coming to a resolution that is, I guess, agreeable to all parties and allows all parties to move forward. Um, I personally have found mediation to be a really, really effective mechanism, um, uh, to resolve issues at a club level. And the reason being is that we all know that people can be keyboard warriors, people, people can be super brave behind a keyboard, but it's very different when you're sitting in a room with someone face to face. And that often can create an environment that is far more collaborative. Um, and I guess, yeah, conducive to reaching, reaching a resolution. Um, so, uh, again, N P I O is not expected to be the mediator. There is a government organization called Community Justice Centers, and their website link is just linked on the slides there. And Community Justice Centers actually facilitate mediation for free. Um, they facilitate it in a location that's, that's convenient for the parties, and they provide or supply the, the independent mediator. So again, that's really good to get someone in that's completely disassociated from tennis altogether, from your club altogether, have that independent voice to really guide the conversation around, um, I guess, what resolutions might be available. Um, uh, just got a question. Do you have any guidance or recommendations on the documentation for these informal management? Uh, I haven't, but you know what? I think that's a really fantastic suggestion, and it's something that I can actually really look to develop. Um, that's a really good suggestion. Um, not something that we've actually ever been asked for before, but now you suggest, I think that's a really good idea. So leave that with me. I will come back to you A S A P, um, probably potentially early next year, but that's a really good idea. So I will definitely pull those together. Um, I might even loop in with, with tennis, with T A Integrity around that because I think that's probably something that would be pretty useful for a lot of people across the tennis landscape. So that's a, that's a really good idea. Thank you. Um, yeah, so sorry, just back on mediation. So again, um, Tennis New South Wales can assist with facilitating in terms of setting up the mediation through Community Justice Centers. So if you do ever have an issue in your club where you think mediation might be an effective mechanism, um, please don't hesitate to reach out to me because I can assist um in facilitating that. And again, as I've said, I've found that to be really, a really effective mechanism. Um, and then the final uh informal option is, is quite funny as a management option because it's that you don't actually do anything. But that's the, that's the situation where the person feels satisfied that they've been heard, they've had their voice heard, they've had their concerns raised, and that's enough for them. So I guess, um, again, situational dependent. If, if you don't think that those informal management options could be appropriate to, for the person, um, there's the more formal management options. Um, again, to reiterate, there is no expectation that as an N P I O, you have an intricate knowledge of how these policies work or how they apply. That's the role of the complaint manager. And to be perfectly honest, if it's a matter that's coming under the national policies, which I'll talk to in a second, that's gonna be managed by either myself or the Tennis Australia Integrity Unit. So, um, really, all that we're looking for you to have as an N P I O is that you have a high level of awareness of what the policies look like and how they work, so that you're able to guide people into, you know, this is an option for you. This is a route that you can go down if you want to. This is how you do it, which is you ref, you refer, you know, you reach out to Tennis Australia Integrity Unit or you reach out to Tennis New South Wales. Um, so I guess in terms of formal management, there is kind of two streams. There's obviously your club policies, your competition laws, that sort of thing. And, and obviously, I'm not gonna speak to that because you all know them better than me. Um, but obviously, that generally will provide a formal framework. And, and even generally, most of your constitutions will provide a bit more of a formal complaint management process, um, which you can refer to. Uh, what I do wanna speak to a little bit is the Tennis Australia National Policies. Um, so I'm hopeful that all of you have, are aware of these because I bang on them a lot. And the fact that you're here probably suggests that you're engaged uh with this sort of stuff. So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm hopeful that you're aware that these policies exist. But, um, if not, uh, at a high level, these policies essentially outline the rules and the standards and behavior expected of, of everyone involved in, in the tennis community. They're, they're basically there to try and ensure that the sport is as safe and inclusive as possible. Um, they're focused on, I guess, ensuring that there's a constant baseline of expectations and behavior that apply to everyone. These policies apply really broadly, so basically they cover anyone who is a tennis participant, which could be, you know, employees of Tennis New South Wales or employees of your club, volunteers, officials, coaches, players, even spectators. Um, or anyone really who has an association or a link with tennis are covered by these policies. Um, and I guess, yeah, their intention is really around creating that really clear expectations of behavior on anyone, on everyone, sorry. And I guess trying to create an environment throughout all levels of tennis that is safe for participants as possible. Um, the policies are on our Tennis New South Wales website and also the Tennis Australia website. So I guess it, you know, would, it would encourage you to read them for your own familiarity without, you know, they are lengthy, so you don't expect it to read it word for word, but just have a general idea of, of, of where, where the policies apply is really, really useful as an N P I O. Um, and I will talk to that a little bit now. So I guess the major policies that you need to be aware of as an N P I O are the first three shown on this slide. Um, just so you're aware, Tennis Australia obviously also has an anti-doping program and an anti-corruption program. The anti-corruption programs around sports betting and that sort of stuff. So obviously, less relevant in the club context, but good for you to know that those policies are there if, you know, perhaps you are facilitating a bit of a higher level competition and, and those issues may come about. Um, but again, there will be no real expectation or situation that would arise where you as an N P I O in a club would, would need to apply those policies. Um, the ones that I do wanna talk to are the first three. So the first one is the member protection policy. So the member protection policy covers the most serious behavioral issues. So that's things like discrimination, abuse, harassment, racism, that sort of thing. So, um, these are the really, I guess, integral issues that we focus on, kind of trying to stamp out from our sport. Um, these, this policy applies at all times while you're doing anything connected to tennis. So whether you're playing or officiating or spectating, or if you're on a tennis camp, or if you're enga- even, um, if you're engaging online, um, but there's a nexus to tennis, this policy will apply, which is really important because we're obviously all aware of, of, I guess, the growing influence in the online spaces. So really important to know that these policies can capture, um, conduct online as well. Um, the second policy, which hopefully you're all aware of, is our Safeguarding Children Code of Conduct. So this policy is essentially the, the one-stop shop for all things related to children within tennis. It reinforces all of the standards uh around what's expected of, of people when they are dealing with children. And what I find really useful is it actually talks to some specific scenarios as well, um, and what the behavioral expectations are there. So that's things like around transporting children, overnight stays where children are being taken away for tournaments, et cetera, communications with children, giving gifts to children. So anyone that really has a role with children or is interacting with children, it's definitely encouraged that they, they read that policy because it really does provide the guidance around, um, what the behavioral expectations are. Um, and then finally, uh, there's the Competitive Play uh Code of Behavior. So this is your more traditional tennis rules, I guess, focused on, on court conduct. So covering things like, um, racket abuse, uh, ball abuse, coaching, that sort of thing. So that's your more traditional tennis rules, um, in the competitive space. Um, again, important that, to know that that policy does capture spectators as well. So players can and are held responsible for the conduct of, of their, um, of their, I guess, entourage as well. Um, so just mindful of times, we're gonna try and move through this reasonably quickly now. But in terms of some specific examples, so the member protection policy would cover things like a physical assault where someone punches someone else. Um, hopefully, that doesn't happen too much in tennis, but it, it does happen. Um, obviously racist, racist comments to, to other players and that sort of thing. So they're the, they're the kind of really key behavioral issues that are captured under the member protection policy, that really more, more serious stuff that makes our sport not inclusive or not welcoming. Um, as I kind of touched on, the safeguarding children policy relates to adhering to professional boundaries. So things like coaches not adding kids on, on Facebook or Snapchat or Instagram, not messaging without having another adult involved in that message, um, that sort of thing. So really just trying to provide a really clear framework for acceptable behaviors when you're, you're interacting with children. Um, and then the competitive play is obviously, as I said, around those more on-court uh situations. So in terms of the complaint handling process and what this looks like, so this complaint handling process applies to all of the policies except for the Code of Behavior, which has its own, um, policy, I guess, procedure. And, and again, you don't really need to understand that in depth, and you don't need to understand this complaint management process in depth. But it is good for you to guess, be aware, so you can kind of point to what it might look like for someone who's considering going through this process. Um, so I guess the process is really focused on, um, I guess, ensuring procedural fairness, which means that everyone involved in an issue has the opportunity to prevent, present their side of the story and be heard. And, um, and then I guess, yeah, it's, it's applied, it's really creating that consistent process, which, which ensures fairness for everyone involved. Um, so, yeah, again, it's not your role to handle a complaint, but, um, as the flow chart shows, there are some, I guess, steps involved in this process which will apply every time. And this is why we say if you can avoid, um, this process in terms of having a more informal resolution or even trying something informal first, that can be really, really beneficial because this process can be, I guess, you know, firstly scary, secondly, can take time, um, thirdly, can feel a little bit more serious, obviously, in terms of, you know, formal investigation, having members of the Tennis Australia Integrity Unit reach out and collecting statements and that sort of stuff. It, it can be quite an involved process. So, um, good that you're aware of this framework and how it exists. Um, again, I will speak to this in more depth when we run that, um, that training session I've touched on next year, the more formal, I guess, part two N P I O training, um, that'll go a little bit more into depth. But I guess probably the most important takeaway around the policies is that because you're not expected to be an expert, that's my job. So if you do have any questions about how these policies apply in your club environment, how they might, I guess, be used by you to improve the environment within your club, please just reach out to me. That's what I'm here for. Um, any questions are definitely welcome. Um, and I guess to that end, um, yeah, just again, I put these slides up, these contact details up previously, but you're welcome to reach out to any of the above. I mean, I've emailed you as well, so you've also got my personal email and my phone number as well. So please honestly feel free to touch base. Um, any questions are really welcome. Um, and yeah, on that, I guess, are there any questions? I know I sped through that a little bit quickly because I am conscious of your time. But if there are any questions at that point, otherwise, um, I definitely will take on note that, that question around developing, um, some informal guidance uh for informal uh management options. Definitely will take that on. But is there anything else anyone wanted to ask? Oh, um, yeah, I just might stop the recording there and just say again, thank you so much for jumping on.